Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll please rise, we'll have an invocation tonight by councilmember Keith Ordno. And followed by that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. The American flag will be led by Patrick Swanswell, PAC 446. And JP Jewell will lead us in the Texas flag, invocation of the Texas flag.
Thank you. You're valued good. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together tonight. Please watch over us all during this meeting. Guide us to do what's best for this community and its surrounding areas. Watch over those protecting us here and away. And be with those in this holiday season that have lost a loved one or have other sorrows that they're dealing with in this very difficult time. In your name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
We're very delighted to have everyone in the audience tonight. And let me take this opportunity to introduce the membership of the Cub PAC 446 Cub Scouts of the Silver Lake and the Neighborhood Silver Lake Crest Elementary. If you guys, young men, would all stand and let us recognize you, please stand, all the scouts have. They are here with their senior leadership and their parents of the troop, of the PAC. And we're delighted to have them here. And some of them will be processing and transitioning over to the Boy Scout troop at a local area. And the rest of them will continue as a Cub Scout PAC 446. So we're delighted to have all of you here. Thank you for coming. And for the adult leadership that are here, thank you for being here to help guide these young men. Because everybody realizes your Girl Scout and Boy Scout process develops young Americans for future leadership in our nation. So these are the young people that will lead us in future years. So thank you all for being here. So let us move now in our agenda. We have a roll call, which is item number three. And all of our city councilmembers are present and with bright shining faces. And moving down to item number four, we have some citizens who'd like to make a few comments. And let me start with Mark Johnson. Mark, are you here?
Yeah.
Please come up to the podium and thank you. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Wait, wait, business to you. I just, I thought they were all the same. Okay, here's one that's not. Michelle Graham. Let me put this over there.
No, I went wrong way. And I'm not Michelle Graham. So there's two stars against you.
You're going down to Cullen Boulevard, turn right on Pearland Parkway. Thank you.
I'm here, hello. You already figured out I'm not Michelle Graham. I'm Joanne Nodel. And I'm here along with Mike Delesky, Alicia Rodriguez, and Michelle Graham. And Buck Stevens is also here. We're board members with the Forever Parks Foundation of Pearland. And the Forever Parks Foundation of Pearland is an enthusiastic advocate for our city and parks and city parks and recreation department. We're committed to encouraging and mobilizing philanthropic support from across the community and beyond. And we're here today to thank the city for their continued support for the parks and recreation and for their ability to provide staffing and support for day-to-day operations. The Forever Parks Foundation plans to continue growing their presence in the Pearland community over the next couple of years and in the future. And we want to encourage residents to get involved and empower citizens to support the Forever Parks Foundation in efforts by providing additional resource to grow our local parks and recreation opportunities. We've provided for you, you have probably in your mailboxes, our annual reports. So I just wanted to make sure that the city councilmembers recognized it and have had a chance to review it. If you have any questions, any one of the board members would be happy to answer them. We have two current initiatives that we are inviting the community to support. We are supporting scholarships for community members who are seeking parks and recreation programs. And where our foundation is funding scholarships for those, for members seeking participation in those programs. And we're also funding a new outdoor initiative for teenagers in the community that's going to be run by the Parks and Recreation Department. So those are two of the programs that we're helping to fund. And we're helping to make, help connect more people in the community with parks and recreation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Graham, and thank you for bringing a message to us. And appreciate what you are accomplishing. And it's good to know that we have some people out there working for our citizens. Moving in our agenda to item number five, which is public hearings, we have none. Moving to item number six, which is a consent agenda. I'll ask Councilmember Carbone if he'll present a consent agenda for our consideration.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, approval of consent agenda items A through D, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that item? Hearing done. Now, Mr. Secretary, we do have a motion, second on the floor.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno.
Aye.
Councilmember Little.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens. Motion passed seven to zero.
With that information in the record, let's, let us move to item number seven on our agenda, collective agenda, which is new business. New business item one, Councilmember Moore, would you do the honor?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action, first reading, reading of ordinance number 2000M-166, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Mr. Griggs from our Community Development Department will give you an overview of this zone change request.
All right. Good evening, Councilmen. Tonight we've got an overview of what we saw at JPH on November 6th. This is the northeast corner of Kirby Drive and County Road 59. It is a request for change in zoning from Office Professional to Neighborhood Services. Again, this is the northeast corner of Kirby and 59. The applicant is proposing development of a small retail center at that corner. The property was annexed in 1996. The future land use map has this area as a minor retail node. And again, the JPH was on November 6th. This is the code conformity table that we've previously discussed. The two hits are, that it hasn't been plotted yet, which of course they'll have to go through before building permit. And the UDC requires that the site to have a buffer on the east and north sides if it goes to a further, or for a commercial zoning classification there. Staff has received three return notices, two in opposition from adjoining property owners and one in favor. This leads to a 28.5% for return notices, which does require a super majority vote from council. This is the criteria for a zone change. And then at P&amp;Z, the original request, as you may remember, was for general business. The Planning and Zoning Commission felt that zoning classification was a little too intense and recommended Neighborhood Services. They amended the vote and then approved it by a vote of five to one. And I will leave you with the aerial map showing current conditions and the future land use map. This completes staff's report.
Okay, that information in the record. Does the council have any questions or comment on this point? And hearing done, we do have a motion, second on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno.
Aye.
Councilmember Little.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Move, new business item number two. Ask Councilmember Reed if he'll present this for consideration.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and final, consideration possible action, first reading ordinance number 2000M-167, so moved.
We have two individuals that would like to speak, and I'll ask our city manager, deputy mayor, back these presentations for this time.
Before staff speak, before staff speaks on this, I think the mayor's saying is he wants the individuals that wanted to speak about, or wanted to make comments about this specific ordinance and so, agenda item. So if Mark Johnson, if you would approach, just give your name and address. Thank you for being here today. What we typically do is limit the comments to three minutes, and so if there's a...
I'll be done in two.
All right, fine, that's great.
Good evening. Mark Johnson with Cortland Partners. We're the developers of the Village of Town Lakes. And we will, we purchased Phase One, 126 units earlier this year, and renovating that project with about a $25,000 unit upgrade, which ends up being about a $3.1 million in gross. And then we're asking for approval and reinstatement of this ordinance in order to go through and build Phase Two, which is another 126 units. This additional 126 units will have another pool, another amenity, and some, you know, dog park and some other additional gardens for the residents as well. That project is another, about $21 million to the, to the current tax base. So that was, that was it. We're looking forward to it. We enjoy working in the city and look forward to, to, any questions y'all may have.
Thank you for those comments. Moving on to the next person, Stephanie White. If you, if you could go ahead and speak now, and then maybe staff can address some of your concerns.
Sure. Hi, I'm Stephanie White with Kimble Horn. We're representing Cortland Partners on this project. The, as Mark mentioned, Phase One of the development is currently existing as an active adult community. The anticipation is that we will come in and continue with Phase Two remarkably similarly to how Phase One is developed. And at this point, we are bordered currently to the north by R2 and to the south by M1 zoning. So looking at the surrounding communities, we believe, or surrounding developed areas, we believe this is a good buffer zone between the two. And our request before you tonight is to consider reinstating the current PD and allowing us to continue with development of Phase Two as previously intended. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Okay, thank you for those comments. I think that's, that's it for that agenda item. Staff report.
Martin Agin will lead us through that.
All right, yes, sir. So as we've already kind of heard, this is for reinstatement and amendment to the previously approved plan development. It was number 25 for Village of Town Lake. It's located at 4055 Village Drive. The property was annexed in 1960. The PD, the original plan development was approved in 2004 and construction of the first phase ended in 2008. Since then, the PD has lapsed, which is why they're coming in today. The applicant proposes the second phase of the plan development with a base zoning of R4, allowing a garden-style active adult community. Future land use category for this area is medium density residential. And we had joint public hearing on this just before Thanksgiving on November 20th. Generally, the conformance table looks fairly positive for this one. The only minor hit on it is for the thoroughfare plan, that it's located off of a private drive and that they'll have to extend secondary access, as we discussed at the joint public hearing. Staff has received one return notice, an opposition, and two phone calls generally requesting information about the, about the rezoning. Again, this is the criteria for approval out of the Unified Development Code. And planning and zoning recommends approval by a vote of four to zero. We do have two small changes that we've been working with the developer on, one of which we had HUD training last week about senior housing development. And we want to insert just one small little phrase in there that references back to the HOPE, HOPO rules, yes. Just to make sure that, you know, everyone's following on the same page and that they're all being treated equally. And the second is that there is a setback, a reduced setback that was built in the first phase. And we want to acknowledge that and make sure that they're not producing a document which puts them in violation. Those are the only two changes, and we'll have those for you at second reading if this passes. Thank you.
Does the council have any comments or statements regarding this particular item?
Yes, Mayor. If nobody else has any comments, I have a couple. Can I borrow the engineer for a second? We spoke about a little bit of this in JPH. What I'd like to say, and this will be the first reading, so, you know, I'm happy approving in the first reading, but the second reading, I'd like to see the exhibits to reflect the secondary means of access and the cul-de-sac that's going to be required.
Okay.
I have a question, though, with respect to the access, because the exhibits show it to be an access easement, but the plat calls it to be an existing 70-foot right-of-way. So do we know whether it's easement or right-of-way?
I believe it's a 70-foot right-of-way that's delineated. It belongs to the city.
Okay, so, you know, part of the site plan will be dedicating the cul-de-sac as part of the right-of-way and then adjusting the site plan so that it meets. So, and the reason I think it's important is because when it gets adopted as part of the, as part of the PUD, the site plan can be enforceable. I wanted to reflect, I think it's important that it reflects what we're going to actually change that to. And we need the cul-de-sac and we need the secondary means of egress.
Absolutely. And there was conversation about working with, with city staff on obtaining the additional right-of-way that's going to be necessary to allow for that full cul-de-sac section to fit within the 70 feet.
My hope is that at least the exhibits that are included in the, in the PD document, which will be accepted by ordinance or be a part of the ordinance or referenced in the ordinance, that they reflect that change.
Absolutely.
Upon the second reading.
No problem.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Any other report from the council? Hearing done. Just any further comments from the city council? Hearing done. Mr. Secretary, we have motion, second on the floor.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno.
Aye.
Councilmember Little.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
No.
Motion passed six to one.
That information in the record. Let's move to item number three. Councilmember Ordno, would you present this for our consideration?
Sorry, I have the wrong, have the wrong paper. Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number 2000T-27, so moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second on the floor. Would you present the...
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We actually have one speaker for this agenda item. Mr. Buck Stevens? Sorry, Constable Buck Stevens.
I'm a citizen tonight. Thank you. Buck Stevens, 4701 West Orange, Pearland, Texas. I just, in reading through this document, the attached agenda item, I wanted to make sure, some clarification on, maybe not from my part, but from staff. I noticed that, and I've got three different sections, so specifically it starts talking about the regulations specific use for the liquor package store on section 2.5.3.3. In AC, it says that the package liquor store must be at least 2,500 feet from the nearest package liquor store, which I somewhat agree with. I wish it was actually more than that, but that's, that's okay. I'm okay with that. But, and of course, it can be weighed by P&amp;Z variance, but then the next thing, it says that, in number D, it says package liquor stores cannot be within 300 foot of an entrance of a residential subdivision. However, in DI, it says measurements are taken from along the property line, from the street fronts, from a front door to a front door. So I don't know how you put a front door on the front of a subdivision. I'm just trying to figure out, is it going to be measured from the front door of the package store to the front of the entrance of the subdivision? Or is it going to be some, the first house that's inside the subdivision, I guess? So just, just an observation there. Didn't really understand what that meant. Also noticed that in E, it says drive-through windows and drive-through services are not permitted. However, I like, I think at least one and maybe possibly two of the ones already approved do have drive-through services. So are they grandfathered in or what happens there? In the next section, where you talk about mobile food units and concessions, I know there's not a lot in red, there's a lot in black that's already there, but just something to consider for maybe a possible in the future. It says that you cannot, that those locations cannot have a food truck, each food truck on location must have one acre of land. So a minimum three acres, so that each of those distilleries must have, have purchased three or more acres in order to have one truck or have a maximum of all three trucks. Most places that I go to only have one truck on location 95% of the time, so I can understand that. And most of those three, if they do bring more than one truck, they put them all together in the parking lot all at one place where people go and visit those food trucks. So it seems like it's a far stretch for every facility that these distilleries and these types of businesses would open up would be three acres or more. Maybe they are, I just don't know that currently, but it seems like most people are buying one or two acres and building on that. And now, I guess they could only be restricted to one. And I'm kind of curious why that is. That's under one. And then under two, there's an issue where, not, not two, I'm sorry. There's an issue where apparently, if I understand it right, that the property owner must provide screening for the food truck if they have a food truck come on location. Under section, seven, shall be screened from view of adjacent streets similar to the parking spaces as per applicable criteria. So it just seems like it's counterproductive for, I guess, if, I guess if that owner's going to start bringing food trucks there, then they've got to build appropriate screen, to screen that entire truck from the front view. And I think that some food truck vendors actually rely on that to get more business. The next one has to do, my last one, I'm sorry, is all the way down at the bottom under the tree ordinance. I just wanted a, I guess, some clarification. There was one part in here that says, for the credit, I, I don't know if I misread this or not, but it says, if I took it correctly, if a person has trees on their property currently and they're going to build on that and they're going to get mitigated some way through this credit process, they get no credit for the trees that were already existing. It doesn't sound like it's right. Now, I may have misunderstood that, but if, if I read through it, and I did scan through it kind of fast, but just looking at it, it just seems like you ought to get credit. If you're going to leave an existing tree there and not disturb it and it comes into compliance, that it's one of the trees that's protected, et cetera, that they ought to get credit for that tree in their landscaping ordinance. I mean, that's what we want, is more and more trees in, in the city, and I would hope that that happens. But anyway, that's just some observations, and I'll leave you with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Buck. Staff report.
Again, Mr. Griggs will walk us through this. This is a text amendment to the UDC. Captures several different items, types that had been discussed by council at various stages.
Right, and I will try to touch on some of those questions as I'm going through. So this request talks about regulations specific to use for liquor package stores, and that's, that'll be the first one. This deals with revisions to the land use matrix to introduce a new area within the chapter specifically to discuss where you put regulations that are specifically tied to a use similar. In the past, we put them in the definitions section, but that's really not an appropriate place to put them, because not everyone's going to look to definitions for specific things to use. So let's put them all in the right place. First up, we're talking about changing where they're allowed, which would no longer allow it by conditional use within the M1 zoning district. The next is to, like I said, remove all the conditions and criteria associated with microbreweries, micro-distilleries, and micro-rewineries, and move them to that section that I had previously talked about. For the package liquor store, this is the set of rules and regulations. During the JPH, council had asked for a map, and I have that map on the next page, so just to head that off real quick. First up, we're talking about having all of them, all of the package liquor stores abide by all TABC regulations. Then it goes into discuss where there would be allowed in BP 288, general business, general commercial, and within planned development districts that have a base zoning classification of one or the above. C goes into the distance between the nearest package liquor store. We set this to 2,500 and allow it to have a P&amp;Z variance to go less than. So in D, we're talking about where a package liquor store, if, if it's within an entrance to a residential subdivision. The intent of this, I want to say, was that so that you're not putting it directly at the, the main entrance to a residential subdivision. So if a street is coming in, that you wouldn't have an out parcel that could sell and advertise or, you know, make themselves known right at that intersection. As far as the, the distances go, or how that is drawn, I will completely let legal talk to that.
Yes, I think here what was used was basically borrowed from state law when it says measure front door to front door. If it's going to be applied in the context of what we're talking about, I think you can measure it from the, the entrance to the subdivision to the front door of that establishment in the same manner that state law does, but we would need to clarify that. We can put that in here, that it's from the entrance of the subdivision. Now, the entrance, entrance to the subdivision can be determined by using the plotted information we have, and you can actually determine that. And then you would measure along, along the street and the property lines, and then you would go to the front door of the establishment and measure it that way. So that can be, that's a change that can be made before the second reading.
E discusses drive-through windows and drive-through uses. That's not being permitted. The previous two establishments that have their conditional use permits, those of course have their rights granted to them already. So we would have to wait for those to either close, close down or go vacant for six months to lose their, to, to lose their rights.
So they're grandfathered.
But I believe TABC may say that they're not allowed to use the drive-through. Again, this is all kind of new territory for both of us, so we're, we'll, we'll check with them to make sure that that is something that they are... them to make sure that that is something that they are or are not allowed to do. F discusses check cashing service, says not being a permitted accessory. And then G says that all of the other unified development code requirements would need to be met. Okay, so this is the rudimentary first go at a liquor store buffer map. It's showing where we have existing or proposed locations, what the three hundred foot residential buffer would look like, and what the twenty-five hundred foot separation distance. You can get a pretty good idea as to, you know, what that distance actually looks like, and where we already have some locations that are within that buffer to each other. If you look closer to two eighty-eight, we did include one of the liquor stores that's kind of been on hold right now, since that application was postponed by council in October. So we just wanted to make sure that all locations are displayed on this map. All right, number two talks about moving all of those regulations from microbreweries, micro-distilleries, and micro-wineeries into their own section. Number three discusses the landscape buffer. And there was a question about, two, there was a question on two about landscape buffers that I wanted to address. That section that was discussed actually talks back to making sure that there is proper landscaping, so that way vehicle lights aren't shining through for the food trucks. And that particular section is meant more for, I believe it's a thirty-six inch shrub. So that, that would be the landscaping that would be required for the owner to put in, or to make sure that they're already previously had put in and maintaining. All right, number three discusses changing the landscape buffer between a commercial or non-residential to a residential use, or the buffer that's required when it's adjacent to a residential use or zoning district. And not requiring that when it's adjacent to a B D D four retention detention facility or some other feature that's over thirty foot in width. And number four discusses the tree mitigation, bringing that in line with the state, the new state law. And I will again let Legal discuss the question that was proposed.
First of all, it, just to make sure everybody understands, the purpose of, this basically tracks the state statute, and the purpose of that statute was to say, if you're going to come in and you have to mitigate, and you're mitigating on-site, the trees that you mitigate on-site, you should get a credit for any fee that you have to pay as well. And it's a fifty percent credit if it's residential, and if it is a commercial, it'd be forty percent credit. You do not get credit for trees that you're not taking down, that's just, the idea is you're coming in and you're going to construct something on your property, and you're taking out trees. The idea is that for the trees that you're taking out, what you mitigate there, you can get a credit for that, but not for trees that you're not touching. You don't get a credit for that. Just want to make sure everybody understood that.
All right, we had no public comment, phone calls or return notices for this at the joint public hearing, and P and Z recommended approval by a vote of four to zero. And that's complete staff's report.
Hey, let's give the council a chance to respond to this. Councilmember Harboun?
No comment, Mayor.
Councilmember Harboun?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, right now, I've been trying to look up and see if I can't find on T A B C about the drive-through window deal. I think the meeting before last, Councilman Ordno and I both didn't understand what the difference between being able to drive up to a window and get it, or ordering it from the store and they bring it out to you, Kroger or H U B or whatever, so I just don't get the, the window deal. Also, I, I'm not really in favor of this, two thousand five hundred feet for the nearest package store. I think if they're going to open up across the street from each other, they're going to open up across the street from each other, and market will dictate who stays in business and who doesn't. I also have an issue with the food truck deal. So if I don't have an acre of property and I have a microbrewery or winery, I can't have any food trucks at all? Can anybody from staff answer that? Because the way I read this, it's basically I have to have a minimum of one acre to have one food truck. Is there any provision in there that says otherwise?
So that one acre basically was something, we didn't change any of the acreage requirements, so that was something that was previously approved.
So if you don't have one acre of property, you can't have a food truck at all?
Correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Reed?
No comments, Mayor.
Councilmember Lardon?
Yeah. Does, will this need a simple majority, or?
It's a simple majority.
Because if not, we do have an issue. Because, yeah, like I stated last time, I'm still not sure what the alcohol provisions are trying to control when we specifically pull out grocery and convenience stores that sell alcohol. To me, if we're worried about alcohol sales, we're worried about alcohol sales. I don't understand the difference. If T A B C does not allow the drive-through, to me, it's a mute point. Why create a city ordinance when a higher authority already says it's not allowed? Food trucks, some of it I like, some of it I don't. You know, basically, three and four, I can go with, but the fact that all these are lumped together is going to force me to vote no.
Councilmember Little?
No comment.
Councilmember Perez?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things, so measure from the property, I'm looking at the offset from the entrance to the subdivision, and I'm trying to make sure that as we, as we read this, there's clarity and predictability for those who want to come in and, and put in a liquor store, that they can read that and, and have some, some ability to predict this. So we're saying, D one, measurements are taken from the property line of the street fronts, and from the front door to front, and from front door to front door, and the direct line across the intersection. So we say property, property lines of street fronts, let's say, let's say Lakes of Highland Glen, we got Forest Park, it comes right in there, we're saying from the right-of-way as defined by the plat, and you take thirty, three hundred feet from that right-of-way delineation. And the only reason I say that is, I would read that and I would be confused as to what we're trying to communicate. I think that that could be misconstrued by somebody who's not sophisticated in doing this, and most of these guys are probably going to do a tenant build-out. They're not going to know property lines of entrances or right-aways and things of that nature, so I think, I, I agree with what we're trying to do, and I agree with the concept behind the wording, I just think that there may be some clarity that could be provided in there. I would personally like us to strike G altogether upon second reading, because, and this kind of goes to a conversation I was having with a council member earlier about creating laws that say, this law is to say that you should follow this other law. I mean, it's inherent that they have to follow the U D C, I don't, I don't see the benefit of us reiterating it. And to be honest, when, when I read stuff like that, it just makes us, makes me think whoever wrote that is, it's just silly. So I think the enforcement is there already. If, if I can, and forgive my ignorance here, but I'm a little confused as what we're doing with the, with the tree ordinance with respect to credit for trees removed, but not, no credit for trees that are not removed. So, if, you'll bear with me, maybe if I can do an example, let's say I have a, a five acre piece of land, and I've got five protected trees on there, and I need to remove three of them, and two are going to stay. So in that case, how is this law enforced?
Well, more than likely, you may not have to pay a fee, you may be able to mitigate without, on-site. The idea is if you have to remove so many trees, but you can't mitigate them all on-site, so you're going to end up having to pay a fee.
Okay.
And then that fee that you're going to pay, you're going to get a credit for those that you do mitigate on-site, and you're going to get a fifty percent credit against the fee that is being assessed.
Okay, so this is sole, do we allow, is the law written, do we allow them to elect, pay the fee rather than mitigate on-site? Or is it only they have to prove that they cannot mitigate on-site?
I believe that the law, currently our regulations, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe our current regulations allow a person to just pay the fee if they choose to do so.
Okay, and the other thing that I wanted to, we discussed a little bit of J P H, and I don't know if it's written into this ordinance, but are we looking at giving credit as part of mitigation for trees that are required by U D C? Are we still looking to have the mitigation be on top of the, the U D C requirement?
That's actually, I believe, excuse me, the very last section, number five, the very last thing that's on there, it says, "No credit shall be given toward the minimum landscape requirements pursuant to Article Two, Division Two of the chapter of the U D C."
And, yeah, and that's kind of how I read that, and I'll be, I'll be frank with you, I'm just not happy with that. And this, for the same reasons I was discussing before, i- if we're going in there and we're clearing a site, and the mitigation requires twenty trees to mitigate, but they're doing a subdivision, and each, each lot, let's say it's a hundred, a hundred lot subdivision, each lot has two trees required plus entrance trees, we're already restoring a lot more trees onto that property than existed. And so we're saying, on top of that, we want you to mitigate even more, and I feel like, I'm just, I don't personally care for that. I don't care that we're requiring people to restore it back to a condition greater than what was there. We're already telling them, put the trees per the U D C. In those cases, we're already telling them, restore trees to this site, and, and all the trees that have to be put in there have to be protected trees that meet, that are on our list, that two, two-inch caliper, meet all the mitigation requirements. We're just saying, because there was these five trees here, do all this and then add more. And I don't, but let me come back to that.
Okay, and I was just saying, I'm not disagreeing with you there, except that the only thing is, if there were, there were no tree mitigation required on a development, they would still be required to comply with those landscaping requirements.
Exactly.
So.
So, if, if the treatment, if the, if they only needed, say, four or five trees to meet the U D C, minimum landscape requirements, but they needed ten caliper inches, or, or let's just say, three or four more trees on top of that to meet their mitigation, we give them credit for the trees that they're having to put in per requirement, but then go add two more trees. But the way it's written right now is, if you need five trees, street trees, you need five street trees. To meet, to mitigate, you need eight street trees. Well, you've got to go out there and put thirteen trees, as opposed to eight. That's the way the law, that's the way it's written. And then we'll say, well, you can't fit all of those because you're adding the five trees, we want eight more, so you can pay a credit. I don't know if I'm alone on that with the other council members, but I'd like us to see, I'd like to see the ordinance written so that if we're requiring to put in the trees, and the trees are in excess of what was be required to be mitigated, that the ordinance reflect that they get credit for that, as opposed to reflecting, you get no credit for that. I don't know if I'm alone on that. I mean, if I'm, if I'm alone on that, I'll drop it, but if not, then I'd like to, I'd like to amend this, on this reading, to strike five and then add wording, or maybe postpone it and see if staff can come up with wording that meets that, again, if we're, if I'm not alone on that.
I'm fine with that. Councilmember Little? Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you, I'd like to hear staff's take on it.
Okay.
I mean, not right now, but I'm in favor of postponing it.
Okay, well then, at least for that issue, let me, let me move to postpone this, so we can get that clarified, and then maybe on the next, the next council meeting, we can clarify that provision, and then, and then accept.
Let me ask staff a question at this point. I think it's important that we pass something in this area of, of coverage that needs to be addressed. Is it possible that there are items that, if we, if we approved it on the first reading between the, and the second reading, that we could clarify those particular items by workshop or some other technique that would clarify the issues, and I've heard about six of, six or eight of them, that, that would lead to not approving this particular ordinance? And if it is, maybe we could, is there some way we could respond to those and still proceed forward?
The one problem you would have, if you ended up adopting the ordinance tonight, minus something, and try to bring those things back later, because this ordinance would be approved, you would have to go through the process again. And in order to avoid that, I think what Councilmember Perez was suggesting is that we postpone it and then bring that back correct, and with any changes that are discussed this evening, and then consider on its first reading at that time, is that, that's what I was understanding.
At least that's my request, I don't believe that we can make a change that's substantive, that's substantial upon the second reading, can we?
I think you, you actually could make that at the second reading, because you're sort of reversing, what, something here, it says, "No credit shall be given for that," and you could reverse that on the first or second reading to decide to, to reverse that and give credit for that, if, if the council thought it was justified to do so. But it sounds like there may be some other changes that y'all are, we're looking at here, obviously, the language, trying to clarify the language on the three hundred foot distance requirement, and I don't know if there's any, I know Councilmember Owens hasn't spoken yet, there may be some others, so.
Well, a couple of things, number one, I'm not happy with the footage on that twenty-five hundred feet, that means that you have three package stores within a mile, is what you would, you could, you could have on there, so I'd like to see a greater distance on, on that than just the twenty-five hundred. And actually, then you can actually get it weighed by a P and Z variance, if you go through it, and then you can cut it down to less than a thousand feet, nothing less than a thousand feet from what it says, if you're able to get, get a variance on it. So I'm not particularly happy with that at all. The other side is, too, on the three hundred feet from a residential subdivision, does that include apartments also?
I'm sorry?
Does that include apartments also instead of, as a residential?
It doesn't specify right now, if you change it to subdivision, you have to clarify what type of, if you're going to use a plat, if it says residential subdivisions, typically apartments are not considered a residential subdivision.
So you could actually put a liquor store outside of an apartment complex.
Technically, yes.
I think there's enough issues for us to postpone a story.
And I believe there's a motion and a second on the floor now for postponement. And it was Councilmember Carbone seconded.
Okay. Any further discussion on the postponed motion? If not, we, Mr. Secretary, we do have motion on the floor.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
This is for postponed.
Yes. Councilmember Carbone? Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed? Councilmember Ordno? Councilmember Little? Motion passed, seven to zero.
Mr. Mayor, just housekeeping, with us having back-to-back agendas and council meetings, we won't be able to bring this back to you until January realistically to clean all this up, so that's when you should be looking for it.
It may take that long. Okay, that's good. So the vote was what now?
Seven to zero.
Seven to zero.
Seven to zero. Okay. That information in the record. Let's move to item number four. Councilmember Little, would you present this with appropriate name?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and Possible Action Resolution Number 2017 dash 217, a resolution and order of the City Council of the City of Pearland, Texas, casting votes for candidate Rudy Joe Knight for the Buzori County Appraisal District Board of Directors for the 2018-2019 term. So moved.
Second. Have a motion, have a motion seconded on the floor. Any further discussion? We have motion on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Okay. Moving to item five, Councilmember Perez?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number 2017 dash 219, a resolution and order of the City Council of the City of Pearland, casting votes for Mark Sullivan for Harris County Appraisal District Board of Directors for the 2018-2019 term.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that item?
I apologize, let me, it's Mike Sullivan, not Mark Sullivan. I apologize.
Mike Sullivan.
Thank you.
Second.
Good. That information. And Secretary, we do have motion seconded on the floor.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Okay. Moving to item number six, Councilmember Owens?
Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R2017 dash 218, a resolution and order of the City Council of Pearland, Texas, casting votes for candidate Heather Sayers for the Fort Bend County Appraisal District Board of Directors for 2018-2019 term. So moved.
Second. Second.
We have a motion seconded. Any further discussion by council? Here it is. We do have motion seconded on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
I'll ask our city attorney if he'd read items seven and eight for our consideration.
Yes, Mayor. I'm going to, I'll read both resolutions and their, the captions in their entirety to fulfill the requirements of state law and then the council can make a motion accordingly. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number 2017 dash 54, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Pearland, Texas, authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire fee simple titles of certain property associated with public improvements in the lower Kirby vicinity. All of that 1.005 acres of land in the James Hamilton survey, abstract 881, Harris County, Texas, which is all of a one acre tract described in the deed from F.D. Limpke to Edgar Ellis, recorded under volume 467, page 127, in the deed records of Harris County, Texas, out of lot three of the James Hamilton survey, a subdivision of record in volume 83, page 342, of the deed records of Harris County, Texas, for the construction and maintenance of public facilities, park improvements, water, sewer, drainage, and road improvements on certain real property described herein. Authorizing the city attorney or designated and other city officials to take such actions are necessary to acquire said property located within the city by donation, purchase, or by the exercise of eminent domain. That would also include consideration of possible action of resolution number 2017 dash 255, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Pearland, Texas, authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire fee simple title, certain property associated in the public, with public improvements in the lower Kirby vicinity. All of that 1.001 acres of land in the James Hamilton survey, abstract 881, Harris County, Texas, which is all of a one acre tract described in the deed from I Smith to Leo Mazow, recorded under volume 784, page 675, in the Harris County deed records, out of lot three of the James Hamilton survey, a subdivision of record in volume 83, page 342, of the deed records of Harris County, Texas, for the construction and maintenance of public facilities, park improvements, water, sewer, drainage, and road improvements on certain real property described herein. Authorizing the city attorney or designated and other city officials to take such actions as are necessary to acquire said property located within the city by donation, purchase, or by the exercise of power of the eminent domain.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Secretary, you made motion for all of those.
Okay, second.
We got a motion and a second now.
Okay. And if this exercise seems a bit familiar, if you recall, in the lower Kirby area, there are approximately eight, let me see, three, seven properties that the council is going to be considering. We did three at our last meeting and there are two at this meeting and then there will be two more in the future. And this is again for the acquisition of property in the lower Kirby area, as indicated in the resolutions for the improvement, for doing public improvements in that area. In this particular case, it, the same family owns these two tracts and we've actually negotiated successfully with the property owner. There are some title issues to the property, which is why we would have to proceed through the eminent domain process in order to make sure that we have clear title to the property. Be happy to answer any other questions.
Okay. Any further question or comment for council? Mr. Secretary, we do have a motion and a second on the floor for R2017, 254, and resolutions are 217, 2017, 255.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno? Owens. Councilmember Owens. Motion passed seven to zero.
What's his name? Okay. Moving to new business item number nine, Councilmember Moore, would you do the honor?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure it's not eight. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R2017 dash 252, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion seconded on the floor. Staff report.
Thank you, sir. These next two items I'll just mention, any wastewater recovery operation involves material sludge that comes out of that at the end. One of them is more wet and requires a certain kind of disposal and the other's dryer, gets pressed and that goes to a different landfill. Both these contracts are for the proper disposal of that and I believe these are both renewals and we recommend your consideration flows to get us through the next year.
Council, any question or comment on this comment?
Yes, I do, Mayor.
Good, thank you.
So looking at some of the bids on here and, so it looks like the other two bidders are not fully able to do all of the things we need them to do, is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Any question, any question or comment?
Yes, Mayor. Do we, do we have anywhere in the contract control over where those sludge is taken?
Mr. Wilson, Mr. Pearson can take care of that for us.
This is renewal and last year, when we brought the item before council, the dried solids are currently going to Blue Ridge. We did ask at that time that they give us a price to go elsewhere and it was going to be about $100,000 impact to go to coastal plants.
So as of right now, our dry solids are still going to go to Blue Ridge?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But the expectation is that when we go with a new contract after the end of this term, we'll start over with a new contract?
Yes, sir. We will rebid the item and we will request that it goes elsewhere.
Any other question or comment from council on the side of, Carbone?
I guess when we rebid it, I'd still like to know the cost difference. I mean, I'm not just in favor of blindly saying it can't go to Blue Ridge. If it's going to cost us in excess of $100,000, I know we've got issues, but.
We can do it alternate way.
Yeah, we expect we would bid it where we could see the low price and then a, add alternate for taking it elsewhere.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other question or comment? Hearing none, we do have motion seconded on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Moving to new business item number 10, Councilmember Reed, would you present this for our consideration?
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration Possible Action Resolution Number R2017 dash 251, so moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. We're, staff report.
This is the second of those items and as I mentioned, this is for the de-watered solids that come out of the process.
Okay. Council, council, any questions or comment?
Yes, Mayor. Just briefly, what were the performance issues we had with the low better?
The previous hauler was leaving material at the site. The boxes were coming in with material in them that was presenting an odor problem. They were not being responsive, they were not getting to us as quickly as they had promised.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other question or comment? Hearing none, we do have most, have a motion seconded on the floor, Mr. Secretary.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Ordno?
Aye.
Councilmember Little?
Aye.
Councilmember Perez?
Aye.
Councilmember Owens?
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone?
Aye.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Moving to new business item 11, Councilmember Ordno, would you do the honor?
Consider, consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance number 1544 dash one, so moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We're in discussion. Staff report.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and council. We have our, as we start the new fiscal year, first budget amendments and Mr. McCarter will walk us through a presentation on that.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Good evening, Mayor and council. As Mr. Pearson said, my name is John McCarter. I have the pleasure of serving as budget officer. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to go over the nuts and bolts of budget amendment number one, typically referred to as carryovers. Before we dive into the nuts and bolts of this, I think it's appropriate to talk about the different items that we're going to talk about today because there is a lot here. We'll start by talking about the unaudited fiscal year 17, year-end standing for fund balances in the general fund and in the water and sewer fund. Then we'll talk about the carryovers. These are ongoing items that were budgeted in 17, but not yet completed or not yet expensed that we need to realize in 18 to keep moving and get those done. You probably remember Hurricane Harvey came through in August. In FY17, we saw about $2.5 million in expenses across all funds. That doesn't stop with the fiscal year, so we will need to adjust the budget to realize the known expenses for the fiscal year 18. We also had a few other recommended budget adjustments based on some of the discussions we had towards the end of the budget process that were not included in the adopted budget and for sales tax. Lastly, we'll talk about the Spectrum 86 reimbursement agreement, some of the adjustments that were made to 17 and our plan for FY18. There's a lot more detail to that than I'll go over tonight. That was published in memos that came out last week, December 7. So beginning with the general fund, taking a look kind of at where we project to end the year. So we do, we have the audit process underway, so these numbers might change slightly. But looking at the revenue side, we did finish about $700,000 under budget for revenue. The main driver there was building permits. We came in about $500,000 under there. The second driver was the ambulance service fees. That came about $280,000 or so under budget and also fines and forfeitures missed by about $150,000. On the expense side, we finished just under $3 million under, under budget. Rolled up into that expenditure number is about 2.1 estimated impact of Hurricane Harvey. In the initial memo we shared, I believe it was November 13th, it kind of breaks out some of those costs, you get an idea of where that money, where that money went. 2.9 of that, three or so, give or take, is requesting to be carried over into, into 18. So the ending fund balance at $2.3 million over where we were, where we were projecting to be. Next up, carryovers. These are typical for, for a fiscal year. We have a total of roughly $2.849 million this year. Some of the major items, over $100,000 are up on the screen. Hatfield Road was a budgeted project in FY17. We did expand the scope of that at mid-year with some additional funding. Police vehicles, wireless routers for police, the shade structure and the HVAC for the data center were all allocated at mid-year. Those are ongoing projects. The ERP project is due to wrap up here the next several weeks with the rollout of our executive time system. Any annexation survey services at $107,000 were a necessary component of getting through those annexations that were completed this month. Looking at Hurricane Harvey adjustments, so as I mentioned, there's about $2.1 million that was expensed in the general fund in 17. Currently, we're estimating about $367,000 to be expensed in 18. The biggest expense there is about $200,000 for our FEMA consultant. An important point is that additional expenditures may be incurred as we continue in the, in the recovery process, in the assessment process. These are our known entities now, so we just want to make sure that we have adequate funding to cover ourselves as we, as we move forward. On the revenue side of the budget, a lot of the costs that were incurred during the storm are reimbursable from FEMA. We put in on the revenue side, $855,000 as a potential reimbursement. That is exactly 50% of the emergency period cost for payroll. So when the EOC was activated, we had $1.7 million over above our typical payroll in the general fund. That is, we will be submitting that for 100% reimbursement. We wanted to put 50% to be conservative to make sure that we weren't getting too far ahead of ourselves in terms of the resources that we expect back from FEMA. And in order to make sure that we are not spending money that we don't have, we have outlined in the December 7th memo, $848,000 worth of expenditures that will be delayed until we confirm the amount of that reimbursement. So if we need to adjust down, if for whatever reason that reimbursement doesn't come through, we can do that. We want to make sure that we have ourselves covered on that side, although we do not anticipate any problems with that reimbursement coming forward. Next up are two adjustments that we talked about through the budget process and in the months leading up to the end of FY17. The first is sales tax revenue. In the adopted budget, we budgeted 4% growth on our projected amount. The rolling 12-month average is closer to 3% and the adjustment that we have in here is reducing that sales tax amount just under $300,000, which would bring us to 3% over our actual from FY17. Now, if you read the, the sales tax report from, I think it was last week, we are about $120,000 over year-to-date budget-wise for, for sales tax, which is great. However, according to research done by U of H and a few other entities, that's typical after a hurricane where you see that sales tax spike and a few months later, it goes back down to the pre-hurricane levels. So what we're recommending to do is get down to that 3%, that's where we anticipate to be. And then at mid-year, if we want to bump up to realize that, if that trend continues, we can do so. But this way, we're positioning ourselves in a conservative manner going forward. The second item is credit card fees. In the original FY18 adopted budget, we did have the credit card fees being passed on to customers, so we did not have anything budgeted for the city to pay those fees. Council gave the direction to delay that project until further direction has been given, until we come back with a plan for council. The $75,000 should get us through probably a little bit more than one quarter for this fiscal year and we can make further adjustments at mid-year if we need to, depending on further direction from council and the information from staff. The Spectrum 86 agreement, there are two memos, one for myself and one from Finance Director Cynthia Pearson that came out on December 7th. I won't get too far into the nuts and bolts of this, but it's important to cover kind of what went down. So in FY16, the city entered into a reimbursement agreement with the developer for the amount of $945,000, 945, 900, sorry, $945,000, let's leave it at that. The funds were provided by PEDC and received into the general fund. What typically happens from there is those should have been expensed out of the general fund. Those reimbursements started coming through in FY17, Q1 FY17, and rather than coming from the general fund, we expensed them from the PEDC budget. We realized this correction needed to be made, I think, two months ago and that was, you know, fleshed out and made before the year closed. So this $429,000 amount is reflected in the fund balance that was shared earlier, so that, that has already been rolled into the numbers. Looking ahead to FY18, there is about $516,000 remaining on that reimbursement agreement and that will either be paid out through actual project expenses from the general fund. through actual project expenses from the general fund or given back to P E D C, because that, it was supposed to be held in escrow there. So what staff is recommending is that we make the formal adjustment at mid-year, meaning that we change the amount in that transfers out account at mid-year. We're recommending this because we will have more resources from the FEMA reimbursement, potential from salary savings, and if we're lucky, sales tax. Just like we did for the Harvey revenue, we have identified five hundred and sixteen thousand dollars worth of expenses that can be removed from the budget if we are not able to make this up at mid-year. But we have capacity within the general fund. We've changed our process, so we'll, we'll start to expense these out of the general fund, and we're comfortable waiting until mid-year to make that, to make that change formally. So putting all of those things together, we have the ending fund balance here all the way to the right, just about sixty thousand dollars over our policy minimum, heading into FY eighteen. And then once we start seeing those Harvey, Harvey reimbursements come back through at mid-year, we can realign and readjust. Looking at the enterprise fund, the unaudited year-end balance came in about two point nine million dollars over where we anticipated it being. A caveat to add to this chart here, these big fifty million dollar amounts are because we refunded bonds this fiscal year. We don't, we don't budget for those refunding, but it's in, in, and out, so these are a little bit inflated. The actual variance on the revenue side was about five hundred thousand dollars over, over budget. That was driven by over-budget water sales. On the expense side, we came in about two point four million dollars under. Three hundred and seventy-eight thousand of that we're recommending to be carried over to FY eighteen. Looking at all the adjustments that we're recommending for, for the water and sewer fund, first with carryovers, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Those are all operational costs that are under one hundred thousand dollars. For the Hurricane Harvey adjustments, in seventeen, we saw four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars in storm-related expenses. In eighteen, we're expecting about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That will likely change, excuse me. And then the additional adjustment would be for the credit card fees. This would be for our utility billing customers, so we can cover those costs until we have a plan forward on, on where we're going with that. Other adjustments and carryovers, P E D C approved their carryovers through their board on October twenty-third, total of one point seven million dollars in revenue and three point five million dollars in expenditures. The adjustment for the Hotel Motel Fund would be to realize advertising revenue from seven, or seventeen to be expensed in eighteen. The carryovers for the grant fund would be to continue to make use of those funds operationally and to administer those in accordance with law, or federal law. The Water and Sewer Impact Fee Fund, the Traffic Improvement Fund, and the Health Claims Fund each have ongoing projects and outstanding invoices. This would essentially just let us continue to implement and to make use of those funds in FY eighteen to complete those projects and meet those obligations. So with that, we'll look ahead to December eighteenth. We'll have the second reading, but I'd love to answer any questions you have.
Good, Mr. Mayor. Just on the spectrum eighty-six, I believe actually, the, the error and how that was being charged out came up at the November P E D C meeting in mid-November. And as John mentioned, obviously, that was discovered then and spent the last couple weeks trying to figure out what happened and why, what we need to do better going forward. And so the adjustments that you described for seventeen, about half of it, and then eighteen with the plan that was outlined, dealing with that, but obviously doesn't help us. We're already thin going into this budget year on the fund balance for lots of reasons, but as was also said, you know, have every reason to believe we'll come close to the higher end on the reimbursement for our direct costs as we get into the year. And we just want to be able to have some options and so forth as, as we stand right now.
Does that complete your report?
Yes, sir.
I would like the council to tune in on this, starting with councilmember Owens down there.
I just wondered on, on this, do we start to get any kind of property tax revenue in?
Typically, we'll start to see that in January, John, Kim. So we'll see those numbers. You know, but for all the reasons of the tax law, the storm, if that's what the question is going towards, you know, this is for the prior tax year valuations, et cetera, there's no reason to believe that those won't be at the budgeted amount.
And we expect to come in at a time of that?
Right. I think there are some provisions for paying a little bit longer, but you know, from the scale of things, it's such a big number, it'd be surprising if that impacts it substantially.
What happens if we do start reaching a lot of delays of getting our tax dollars in, property tax, that's wrong.
Well, again, given the structure of that, it'd be hard to see how that could happen, but we'll know, you know, next few weeks, as in January, probably.
We see the big spike in January. That's when you kind of get an idea of where you're at relative to collections, and if that's behind where we've been in previous years, then we'll have to make, you know, adjustments accordingly.
So we do have a fallback if that occurred?
Yeah, I mean, it would be reductions, but yeah. We keep an eye on it, yes, and stuff, you know, and we can report that out.
Council Perez?
Thank you, Mayor. For the most part, I'm pretty much in agreement with everything that we're doing. I think the, what we're holding off in order to be responsive, I think all makes sense. All of them are things we want to do, but they're not critical. I mean, I hate seeing us not add the planner that I think that we need potentially, but I mean, it is what it is. With respect to the, the spectrum eighty-six mistake, look, it's a mistake. Obviously, somebody had a hiccup somewhere on there, but I think it's understandable. You know, there's, there's always room for criticism, but I think that, you know, we have the process in place that we have. We don't expect that our staff could bat a thousand. These things happen. I think it's completely understandable how this happened, and we'll just adjust as we need to. So I commend staff for, once it was identified by the auditor, they worked through it, they gave us an update, let us know what was going on, and then proposed a solution by council, or to council. So, you know, while I wish the mistake didn't happen, I commend staff for jumping on it and trying to find some way to rectify it. So again, you know, we'll just know better next time. That's all I have, Mayor.
No comments.
Ordno?
Thanks for all the work. No other comment.
Sounds like a good way of getting around the issue that we don't know what our expenses are until later on, and we don't know what kind of income we'll have or payback. So it's, I guess, addresses it. Colonel Reed?
No comment, Mayor.
Carbone?
Thank you, Mayor. Just, just to clarify, it wasn't the external auditors that found this. This was found internally, so we did run it by the external auditors, but being an audit background's a big deal, that we caught it before it got to them. And thanks staff for all the write-ups and memos. There's plenty of detail. I guess the overarching question I have is, when we started off talking about revenue being down five hundred K due to building permits, how do we think that's going to track into the future years due to decreased value being, being on the ground?
Great question. We will have a write-up for the white paper coming up in February, but the short answer, looking at next year, we budgeted about, I think the number was a little bit over four hundred thousand dollars less in eighteen than we did in seventeen. The only reason we drove up in seventeen, if you remember, at mid-year, we were way over budget in the year-to-date when we did those projections. So in eighteen, it looks like we might be okay because we were trying to be conservative on that. But the question of the out years is a good one, and I might have to wait till February to answer it in detail because we're researching and getting that together. But at mid-year, in eighteen, the adjustment might be there, but it'll be less than this year.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further question or comment? Mr. Secretary, we do have motion, second on the floor.
Councilmember Ordno.
Aye.
Councilmember Little.
Aye.
Councilmember Perez.
Aye.
Councilmember Owens.
Aye.
Councilmember Carbone.
Aye.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Okay, with that information on the record, let's move to an exec, let me open an executive session under Texas Government Code at seven fifty, seven fifty-one, for executive session, section five five one point zero seven four, for personnel matters regarding appointments to city boards and commissions, and section five five one point zero seven one, for consultation with city attorney regarding pending and potential litigation. Obviously, we can discuss these items with our staff and other individuals in the executive session, but we cannot make a decision in the executive session. But upon return, open session, we do have these items, one and two, available for our consideration. We adjourned into executive session at seven fifty-two. I'm with you.
You might have to replace all of them.
Just let the court drop.
Counsel, let's return from executive session at nine oh five. Moving to New Venice item one, personnel matters, no action was taken on this item by the council. On item two, consultation with city attorney regarding pending and potential litigation, no action was taken by the council on this item. There has no further business before this council and executive session adjourned at five, nine oh six.